When it comes to policies, I can keep it short or I can keep it interesting. In this case, I'll keep it short. So, there's three policies that the district has that exist that are triggered by tonight's discussion. One is the Sexual Health and HIV/AIDS Prevention Instruction Policy. One is the Controversial Issues Policy, that I think you've heard reference before. And one is the Non-Discrimination and Harassment Policy. So, the district has a Sexual Health and HIV Prevention Education Policy. It's a board policy and administrative regulation, 6142.1. And that addresses specifically Sexual Health and HIV Prevention. Under the California Healthy Youth Act, it requires school districts to ensure that all students in grades seven through twelve receive comprehensive sexual health and HIV prevention education that addresses particular topics. That law grants parents the right to excuse their child from all or part of comprehensive sexual health and HIV prevention education and assessments related to that education. And I think you'll see references to sexual health education and HIV prevention in the policy that's being proposed tonight. So, parents are allowed to excuse their child from those discussions and that instruction. The school districts are required to notify parents and guardians about such instruction and their right to opt out at the beginning of the school year or when the student isn't old mid-year. And the notice to parents on this policy and on this instruction, once again, specifically for comprehensive sexual health and HIV prevention, is the notice has to contain certain elements. And that would be what the educational materials are armed and they have to be available for inspection, whether the education will be taught by school district personnel or outside consultants. And parents have to be notified, once again, of their right to opt their child out of that instruction and to request that opt-out in writing to the school district. So, the district has this policy and is complying with the legal requirements of the law.
Thank you, Dave. So, first, I want to talk about, a lot will say, "Well, why do we need this? Why does Newcastle need this school policy?" And while I do believe that you have one of the stronger policies on controversial issues, it still would not have prevented or prevent tomorrow morning from a kindergarten teacher reading "I Am Jazz" in the classroom, having a boy go change into his dress, come out and be presented by a new girl named to the captive kindergarten audience, and not tell parents ahead of time or after. The problem with not having a policy specific is you can have rogue teachers do this. For instance, in Rockland, they were notified that the narrative that the child was transitioning all year is false in the mother's own email on Monday night, June 7th, to the teacher, which was forwarded to the administration. Not only does she say, you may have noticed his hair is growing long, he wants to call this new name, he wants to be a she, this may be temporary. This may not be something that he stays with. However, I want him/her to be respected. Now, this teacher, after getting counsel from the administrators, thought it was wise to do all of this that came after within 48 hours of receiving that email and three days before school was going to be out for the entire year, knowing that this could be just a phase the child is going to. Those are the words of the mother saying, "We don't know if this is gonna stick." And that is the counsel they got from their superintendent and from their principal. I don't even know what I don't have from the open record. So, that's why this is needed. Without a policy like this, parents can't trust that this is going to go on. We have parents that were at that charter school for so many years, loved it, loved the teachers, and were shocked at the contempt with which they were treated about their own kids. So, the policy that we have put forth, it takes California existing law, happy to say again, I agree with legal counsel on what the Sex Ed and California Healthy Youth Act does, and we're taking existing law regarding parental notification and opt-out that exists in numerous states, and we're including the discussion of sensitive topics like gender identity and family structures. Now, a lot has been said about ADF and how they have approved this, and they have, they've approved that it's compliant with California and federal law. And I just want to say that Alliance Defending Freedom and you have an FAQ that I hope you will read, they've argued seven cases before the U.S. Supreme Court in the last seven years and won every single one of them. So, I think they know what they're talking about when it comes to some of this and would not have backed this policy if they didn't believe it was something that would stand the legal muster. I want to talk about the word discrimination and doesn't this violate the discriminatory and the anti-bullying, all of that, which you all have a memo that talks about that? And some will say, "Well, isn't this like allowing parents to opt their kids out of Lessons on Black History Month?" Well, a couple of things. I want to say that for two years, Rockland Academy was letting a Jehovah Witness opt out of all sorts of core knowledge. It wasn't until this all happened that they said, "Oh, we can't let you opt out because of your beliefs anymore." Opting out of Aladdin, opting out of books, opting out of World Holidays. And so, they knew they had to respect her religious rights. But when it came to this, all of a sudden, these parents were discriminated against. But I want to address the issue of, doesn't this discriminate? Now, California law requires schools to allow parents to opt their child out of sex education, which discusses the differences between sexes. Yet, that opt-out provision is not considered discrimination on the basis of sex. That is also prohibited under the California state law, under discrimination. The same would be true for a school that allows parents to opt their children out of discussions about beliefs of various religions and social studies, like the Jehovah Witness. And it's not discrimination based on religion to give parents the option to discuss the different religions and their beliefs at home. I want to encourage you, I know you don't typically, it's usually discussion, I hope that we're opening the conversation and that we can have some discussion about this policy and that the community really can heal and that you will respect the parents and make sure that another kindergarten class, this doesn't happen to with a rogue teacher and a rogue principal.
This idea that this policy can opt out is illegal and to this day, no one has given us any proof. My way over here, I was asking myself, "Why am I here? Why am I going?" And I suppose that's one of the reasons why. I keep asking a question that seems like I should have a simple answer, or at least somebody could point me in some direction, and I still haven't received that answer from them. I'm also here because on August 21st, I attended a Rockland Academy Gateway Board meeting because I was interested in knowing how the board would deal with discussions of sensitive and controversial topics, especially those that fall outside of the adopted curriculum. What I did not expect to hear was the paraded teacher's stand-up and tell parents things like, "We should give our children the opportunity to be scared." That question me what happens in the classroom puts onerous limits on a teacher's toolbox and that our kids would amaze us if we only exposed them to more. These statements caused me to question their judgment, and they no longer feel assured that some teachers will exercise good judgment. Our own board wrote a statement that said, "We were unnecessarily concerned about what happened in the classroom." I addressed this statement that night and have asked the board repeatedly to provide me a copy of it to no avail. Since then, I, along with many parents, have worked to follow all the proper channels to ask questions, give our input, and advocate for our rights as parents to know what is being presented to our kids and to choose whether or not it is right for them. Unfortunately, this process has revealed to me what appears to be a lack of independence between our board and the administration. For example, I requested meetings with each of our board members. They were gracious to agree and most were generous with their time. But I have since come to find out that some agreed to me only after asking for guidance and even coaching from school administration. My question for you all is, is that standard practice? I thought school boards existed to provide independent oversight. So, I guess that's why I'm here, because I want anyone who might care to know that a parent's right to know what happens in their child's classroom is not an unnecessary concern. Over the last nine months, students at Rockland Academy Gateway have been exposed to topics such as transgenderism, contracting AIDS by sharing needles, and having unprotected sex, school shootings, and most recently tantric sex. The presentation of these topics in a teacher-directed forum ought to be concerning, and it's why I'm here asking you to use your independent oversight to consider this policy. To provide parents a firm assurance that their rights of all will be protected.
What I had to say, I just want to emphasize again the problem with "I Am Jazz," one of many, many problems. But one problem is, it's been stated that this is a civil rights issue and not a sex ed issue. And there were little children here earlier, I didn't want to go into it exactly, but just to reiterate, Jazz writes, "I have a girl brain but a boy body." So, ask yourself, what parts make a boy body relative to a girl's? A penis, a scrotum, testicles, vast difference, there's all sorts of things. So, whether or not it's stated explicitly or not, there is sex ed in that book. Jazz also refers to transgender. What does that mean? You're saying that the mind believes it is one gender, but the body, sexual organs are mismatched. So, even using the word transgender is sex education. So, the book contains sex education without a doubt. Now, I've heard, and I haven't quite confirmed this, but supposedly, allegedly, this "I Am Jazz" book is either on the Placer County Approved Book List or the California Approved Book List. Maybe it is or isn't, I don't know if anyone knows that for sure, but let's say it is on the approved book list. Does that mean you automatically read it and trust it and trust the people who are saying that? Who actually makes the list? Who comprises it? I'll give you an example. I'm sure the state mandates that milk cartons are labeled with a certain date, but if you pour it out and it's spoiled, would you still drink it? Or would you use your reasoning and look and say, "There's something wrong here. It was marked by the state, but something happened. We should think about this." I think I've read through your Controversial Issues Policy, and I think it's weak insofar as it would not prevent what happened at Rockland Academy in Newcastle. And I have my reason somewhere, but I'll have to go off the top of my head. One thing it says, this controversial issues policy says that both sides of a topic should be explored. Am I right? Okay, why was only one side given at Rockland Academy? The gentleman earlier said that the policy covers comprehensive sexual education, all or part, but I'm not sure that reading is correct. Why then, if gender is discussed, why aren't parents notified? And importantly, Denny Rush was there at Rockland Academy. If what they were doing conflicted with what the policy is here, why was that not stated? Why was she defending the board there? This is something we should think about. I think the superintendent failed to identify the controversial topic happening at RA. And the question is, can she identify controversial topics here in Newcastle and will parents be notified? Thank you.
Hi, I was just coming as an observer. I'm a Newcastle parent and I've been in Newcastle district for 13 years and have seen much of this on social media and have been kind of a fly on the wall for the last however many months, nine months. Got to meet some different people and get different perspectives. And what I wanted to share is, as a parent and as an individual who believes strongly in Newcastle Elementary School District, I understand that we have oversight over other schools. And I think it's really important to look at the fact that, I guess I'm gonna use the word guilty by association, it's a really important word to use right now, because nobody knows who's who and what's what. When you hear administrator, when you hear superintendent, when you hear Newcastle School District, whatever you hear. And what I'd like to recommend to the board is to really consider the ramifications of whatever decision you make on this policy and how it has far-reaching effects into all of our schools in the district. And that if we do have oversight, albeit what my understanding is fairly limited oversight, that we need to be really conscientious about the fact that we can't take down a whole district because of a school. And I know that might be a really strong statement to make, but I feel strongly about that. I've been in this district for 13 years. We have a solid track record, we have great schools, we have great things. As a parent and as a more conservative parent, and as also a social worker, so I call myself the little conservative social worker, I would have appreciated a heads up about a topic of this sort, especially in my kindergarten class. I also understand the flip side, I'm in California, I have kids that are in public education as these kids are in charter. So, there's a lot of variables, and I find myself very in the middle on a lot of this stuff, but I think it's really important to take into consideration the far-reaching effects for the entire district of whatever decisions that you make.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak. I flew up here along with my associate from Southern California today to the board meeting. This is an issue of national importance and certainly of significant statewide importance. This issue for Rockland School District or Rockland Academy, you've seen it on the news. And I would like for you to embrace the opportunity you have. You know, I think about the situations my kids have put me in, and I've had to deal with them. You're kind of in that situation now. One of your schools engaged in a situation where they really didn't comply with this controversial policy, where it suggests that you need to take into consideration the age of the kids. Well, these are kindergartners, and I don't think anyone rationally can step back and think that this was an appropriate situation that Rockland allowed to occur without advising parents ahead of time and preparing them. You know, back, I'm a litigator, I'm a lawyer, I used to work with Alliance Defense Fund, we have an organization now called Advocates for Faith and Freedom. We're an allied organization with Alliance Defense Fund, we work with the Capital Resources Institute, the California Family Council, and we're here in California to try to push back against some of these things where frankly, the legislature has put you in a rock and a hard place. And it's not fair. It's not fair to you. However, if you embrace the opportunity, you have an opportunity to take a policy, whether it is this exact policy or a policy similar to it, it'll give you the ability to adopt a policy that can be a guidepost for all of the other school districts in California. Unfortunately, you are the school district in California that has to deal with this because of what happened at Rockland. And I would encourage you that if you embrace this policy and you work with us, I'm more than willing to help you. Pro bono, work with your lawyer. We've litigated these types of cases. If you don't embrace the opportunity, you might find yourself, and this is not a threat from me, but be in a position where you find yourself in liability because you didn't consider or didn't have a policy that considered the effect, especially the emotional impact of trauma that this kind of thing can have. Are you doing it in kindergartners? Where you find parents that wind up suing you because of what happened to their kids. And I know you don't want to be in that position, but as I said, you're in a rock and a hard place thanks to the legislature. So, here's an opportunity for you. We'll be happy to work with you, pro bono. I know ourselves, and in certain Alliance Defense Fund, if they were here, they would agree with me, and we work with them, they fund us on occasion, we would represent you pro bono. If you were to be sued by someone to say, if they suggested that the policy was unlawful, it certainly isn't. And we're here to help you, we want to support you. I'm sure, you know, seeing what you guys have done today, you guys seem like a great board, so we're here to help you. If you like. Thanks.
Everyone has an opinion on this topic, as I think she mentioned. Just take a look at social media. And sadly, the school community that we were in is still completely divided on this. I'm still here even though I left the school, just because I still stand for parents having the fundamental right to educate and direct upbringing of their children. So, I'm still here even though I love the school and with now invested interest in Newcastle still. But just with the trust that's been broken at Rockland Academy, we've been tracking, and at least 90 students have left, with this being part of their reason. The public records or the official records of a school may be different, but we've been tracking lists of families just that have been working together. I mean, that's three, it doesn't seem like much of a school of 1,000, but that's over three classrooms of kids who have left over this because they didn't feel their rights were respected. A local dean of education has talked about the opt-out provision and just how really simple it can be. I don't know how this issue can be healed at Rockland Academy or prevented in another school district without providing an opt-out. I just don't see it. I think this issue continues to be even more polarized in our country as a whole and coming down into the schools at this young of an age. There's gotta be a way for parents, there has to be a way for public schools to still serve the public. The beliefs that were trampled on when transgenderism was taught at school, does that mean those people are no longer members of the public? I'm in a unique situation because the kids that I hold, I put one into private, but I have one son that, we did put him in another public school, but he has disability, so we can't go to private school. So, public school is my only option. Homeschool, there's some great homeschool chatters, but then that, you know, they all have their upsides and downs. So, I guess I just ask that with your authority over Rockland Academy and then also to be proactive in Newcastle and to be prepared, if this situation would happen in the Newcastle school tomorrow, to be prepared that teachers would know ahead of time and would give the parents an opportunity to opt out if they choose to use any of these Placer County tools. Thank you.
My name is Ally, and I just wanted to stand and say that I agree with the parents and Karen and the policy. And I just wanted to, just to reiterate the fact that throughout this whole situation with Rockland Academy, a lot of us parents are left hurt and distrustful. This is a school that we loved. We were the room moms, we were the art docents. The parents who left, we were involved. We love that school, we love the teachers, and most importantly, we love our kids. So, it was a hard decision to pull my kids out of the school. When I was crying in the office the day that I withdrew them, it was very emotional. This school is very much divided. And I just want to remind everyone here, the school uses, likes to use the term stakeholder. And I just want to remind everyone that the parents, we are the greatest stakeholder in our child's lives, and these are our kids' interests more so than any teacher or administrator. So, thank you for listening today.
Hello, my name is Heather Ryan. I'm a former parent of Rockland Academy Gateway, and I now have my kids at Harvest Ridge, Loser Academy. We left Rockland Academy, I had a child in third grade and one in TK. I'd heard what had happened in June, and I emailed the school and told them about my concerns, and I was told that I would be addressed at the board meeting. So, we went to the board meeting, my husband and I, and we were told that they agreed with what happened with the teacher and that they supported what happened and that they had a waitlist of several students. And so, if we didn't agree that we needed to leave, that it was time to go. And so, my husband and I decided that night that it was time for us to leave the school. We did. My son and I cried for a month, it was very sad. We expected to graduate from that school, that we were gonna go there for many years. I felt like our concerns were pushed aside. And these were kindergartners, these were young children, they're questionable. My daughter is still, someday she thinks she's a fairy, someday she thinks she's a cat. I think that I had that right, and she had her innocence to have the time to grow and when I was ready to teach her these things that are coming out. And I wasn't given that opportunity. And so, I felt like we had no choice but to leave that school. It was very hard for us. And I'm asking you guys, I understand, teachers are scared, they don't, they don't want all these rules, but I'm asking you guys to put something in place to protect these young children. We don't know what it's gonna do to these children, they cheat in this when they're not ready. And just to protect these young children who aren't ready for this, and the parents that have these rights over these children, to think about this. I mean, it's a scary thing. We don't know where this is gonna go or what's gonna happen. And as parents, I felt that I had a right for my poor, almost five-year-old daughter at that time, but I wasn't given those rights. And so, please, I'm just asking you to listen to some of these parents. Thanks.
Obviously. I'm a parent with a child that was in that classroom that day. And we were there, Rockland Academy, at the beginning, Gateway. We were there, my husband helped set up tables and carried millions of chairs up the stairs. And like other families intended to be there, we were there every week volunteering. We loved the school, and our children were invested and loved the school. And for me, it was the fact that they couldn't tell me what happened to my child in her classroom that day. And that we asked, the day of kindergarten graduation was just a day later, we asked the teacher what happened, and she told us one story. We had a meeting with the principal, they told us a different story. And we asked the parent of the child that had this transition, and she told us a different story. So, it just, it was, it was a mess. And eventually, I had every intention of keeping my child there because I thought, my two children, I thought that they would take my religious beliefs, my, I mean, I am part of the public, right? I thought they would take those into consideration. And instead, they swept us aside like we were trash, like we have plenty of children on the waitlist if you are not going to comply with what we want to do and say to your kindergartner. It was very confused. All I would have wanted was the chance to talk to her ahead of time. It wasn't that I, I respect everyone's views on this, and I, and luckily, my child was raised to be compassionate and loving, and she reacted that way to this child. And in the classroom said that there were children that were laughing. And so, she included her and brought her over and played with her. And I was so grateful that she had that, but it's because of what we taught at home beforehand, not because we knew that that situation was gonna happen to her, but I would have liked the opportunity to speak to her beforehand, to say, "This is what's gonna happen in class, and this is to help prepare you." For example, anyway, I don't know what the type, but I love the policy, I think that it will help prevent something like this from happening again, or at least give the parents an opportunity. We want to help, we want to be a partner in our children's education, but this was not giving us the chance to do that. This was something that was sprung on our children at an age that I don't think is appropriate, at least without some parent guidance ahead of time. So, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Steve Phillips, and I'm probably like every one of you, you kinda wanna be here, but you kinda don't wanna be here. Let's be honest, all right? We have folks from all over the state, we have doctors, we have legal counsel, we have pro bono legal counsel, which is really cool, we have dedicated board members who are dedicated to being educators and our children. We have two sheriff's deputies out there, okay? They're there to make sure this controversial issue policy remains civil, to keep law on record, because it's recognized, the board recognized that this is a contentious hot button for the whole community and the state and the nation. Great. I love finding out about that stuff through national media. Fantastic. So, the sheriffs are here to protect the board, to protect us. At home, our parents protect the children. At school, who's gonna protect the children? Do they have the luxury of getting sheriffs there if we have a controversial issue or somebody of a declared gender sits and uses the bathroom and we haven't given an opportunity to have a separate bathroom? But anyway, who are we? We're parents, we're mothers and fathers and children, we've all, we're all sons and daughters. We're educators, we're residents, we're taxpayers. This is an exciting opportunity to partner with parents. I'm a parent, I'm a father, I'm a husband. We give you, the educators, our children, every day. Wish we could. You teach them, you care for them, you influence them. I still remember the names of most of my teachers from kindergarten through sixth grade, some 40 years ago, in many different schools, and not because I was bad, I moved around a lot. But, you know, as parents, we reinforce the lessons that you all teach us, kindness, tolerance, stewardship. As educators, you are entrusted with our most precious resource, our children, the future, which is what we as parents leave behind when our course here is run, all of us. This board has the perfect opportunity to act, to strengthen that policy, the bond between the parents and educators. Rather, it's our duty to do so, as we've heard- the bond between the parents and educators. Rather, it's our duty to do so. As we've heard from folks that, holy smokes, we're on the tip of the spear here, okay? This isn't going away. This is the flashpoint. My goodness. We must move forward together for the children, for the future.
Well, just one thing that struck me, listening to parents from Rockland several times now. And I wrote it down atop of one of my notebooks here as I was trying to take notes. A lot named column. I think it's a fair, safe statement. Promise you, there's been no named column within this board. There will be no named column within this board. We might not agree, we may not agree with this policy recommendation, because I think we've heard discussion that Rockland didn't have this controversial issues policy. They didn't have a framework to work with it. And as we look at this, as we think about this, this has been a hot topic for a while. And I've been stopped on the street by parents and children here in our schools. I've spoken with other parents and children here in our schools and their concern. I've heard your comments from parents at Rockland and the pain that you guys are sharing. I mean, it hurts. It truly hurts. So I can just imagine the pain that you guys are feeling. And we have the same kind of concerns that we do the right thing by our children. And so I can promise you that we have all on the board been looking at our policies. We've looked closely at the proposed policy that's been laid in front of us. And I think, I don't know. As I've gone through our, and I don't want to take the whole time.
Go ahead, Derek. This is our time.
As I've gone through, I should talk to you guys, I guess.
You guys can listen in though.
As we all, I'm sure, have gone through our existing board policy documents, our administrative regulation documents, I've been impressed frankly, at the concern and the focus on parental rights. And I've been impressed by the concern about privacy for parents and for children and for families. And I think that this has been, the work that's been done way before my times, but I can't take any credit for this, but the work that's been done, has been very solid work done to both respect and honor parental rights with those student and family privacy rights.
I'll say something. I do think that the policies that we have in place are sufficient. I was really moved by everybody speaking. I have a kindergartner, I have a first grader, and I have a 16-month-old and a three-and-a-half-year-old. Similar to what Karen was saying, you know, it does hurt to see people, parents, in pain. I'm just kind of saying how I feel right now. I'm just processing it all at the same time.
And you heard me talk a little bit about, since I'm on the policy committee and technically this is a proposed policy here. And so quite frankly, for maybe for Laura and for people that are new, how we actually do this, right? So, you know, we, even though you read in school board books and things like that, that we, you know, we create policy. In pure practical sense, when you have 454 or whatever, we have kids in our, what we really own, independent charters, which we have a very thin relationship with, we'll say in terms of oversight. But we're a very small district. And so what really happens in the world is, is the California School Board Association basically takes a look at everything that's going on out there. Basically, the end code changes, the laws, the reporting requirements and all that. And they prescriptively put together a set of documents out here, which are our recommended board policies. And we go through those, you know, on a regular interval, basically every month, they produce these like five times a year. We have 640 board policies and administrative regulations. And so that's where we get our information. And so from a very practical point of view, if we were going to move outside of that framework, then I suspect we would have to do a lot of work, I would feel we would need to do a lot of work on our own with other people to properly position the district for success. Basically knowing what the risks are, we're aware of it. And I am worried, that's a very expensive process, even with, although that is the intriguing, you know, recommendation or option there. And I think that's a very expensive and labor-intensive thing. And with the district of 450 kids, we have trade that off of versus our, I don't know, you know, what is equivalent, you know, Spanish programs, modernization of a building that's, you know, 50 years old up there. We don't have a staff of legal folks, you know, we can't sell them. You know, instead of working on that, I want you to work on this. We're a family. We have to go out and hire these people. So we will trade off things that we have in our budget to do this. And that's a zero-sum game. And I'm a little worried, we'll say, that if we move outside of the CSBA umbrella, that we would be putting ourselves at some legal risk. It's not exactly a, it's rather rigid society religion, and they hate to see us in that spot. So I'm worried about taking the real hard trade-offs for what our children, what we're providing our children now. You know, I'm sympathetic to what, you know, what I've heard here, you know, all the passion. And I'm a parent too. And, you know, it's just, it's really an unfortunate set of circumstances. And I would hate to kick this down, pan down the road or point it somewhere else, but I would see us making very hard trade-offs to be the, you know, to be the flashpoint, to be the ground zero on this discussion. So that was, so my recommendation is, is we would basically not facilitate this. And that's my.
Doesn't matter. I think this is a risky area right here. But let me, can I, following on Jim's idea, where I was going to wrap up was say that I believe that our board policy and administrative regulations are in good shape. But given recent history and with the introduction of a book by a parent, I would like us to consider a, for the controversial issues topic, consider some wording that would address material coming into the classroom by a parent or a student, something other than what's in the curriculum, what's being taught by the teacher, that before that can be introduced to a class, it has to go through a review and vetting process. I mean, we know this topic, but what if somebody brought in a book on white supremacy? Or what if somebody brought in a book that was, had implied hate statements in it? So that just worries me that, and I don't want to take away from sharing, you know, the time to bring in your thing from home, but at the same time, given what we've experienced here, would it be feasible for our policies team to explore some wording that gives clear guidance? Because what we want to do is, we want to support our staff and our teachers. We don't want them to fall into a hole. And if they had a way to say, oops, I can't read that today, because I'm not familiar with this book, but we should take it to this process. That's what the whole thing is about. When we went through the board training, it was all about process. They kept driving that home on us. You've got to get your process. So that's kind of, following your idea, that was one specific thing that came to me, that from this discussion that I wanted to explore if we could explore.
That a good way to deal with this issue is to have honest conversations with our kids about the real world, about things that might be brought into us, about kids that you might encounter as part, or about issues that might be brought up on the school bus by other kids on my home. That's my thing. That's how I handle things. I think that it's nice that kids can bring in things to share, that they can bring a book from home to share, that they can bring a toy from home that someone else may have never seen that might be important to them. Like I said, we're just having a conversation here as a board, just trying to be honest with everybody here too. And that's, you know, I think before we start talking about sending notices or telling staff what they should be doing, we need to understand that we're talking about something that has not been deemed appropriate. And...
What? Kidding.
I hear what you're saying absolutely, that if a person feels what they feel, it's not, my person's controversial.
Really not.
How they feel and are inside.
I appreciate that you brought up about talking to your children at home. And that really, I firmly believe in that. I think parents, you know, raise up their children in the way they should go. And when they're old, they will not depart from it. But it's hard to say that this particular topic would not be controversial when we have a room full of parents that are upset and officers outside.
Amen.
I don't think this person is controversial by any means. And they need to be respected and treated with dignity and never discriminated against. But this is just a tough one.
Well, somewhere in our discussions or our presentation, the term sensitive or controversial. And how would we want to word this? And this clearly has parents passionately related. And I think yous have to listen to that. And so there was something that can be done, again, that respects the privacy, it respects the folks involved here. But what can we do to try and get that balance, that balance between parental rights and the rights of the individual and privacy of the individual? And that's where I'm struggling. I don't see beyond our current policies and procedures and administrative procedures, what it is and how we can do that effectively without harming one side. That's what the balance here that we're trying to walk and trying to find, that is difficult.
I think with the board policy committee has time to really, you know, lose this and just, you know, find where, there's a place where, maybe not, maybe you go back when there won't be, but just think it's not something we're going to find tonight.
And again, I sure don't want to stop sharing time or bringing in books. But at the same time, we have challenges of self-publishing. I could write a book about anything and have it brought in. At some point, we need to have someone take a look at it and say, are there things between the lines here that are harmful? Are there some things between the lines here or things that are in this book that are inappropriate, either for the age or for content? That's my concern.
And according to the policy, I'll go back to, we have two steps, right? We have a teacher, we have a superintendent. So if we feel uncomfortable with those two levels, then we should look at additional policy. Or if you want to homogenize it, have someone direction, that might be another way to do it. But it's not like we don't have, you know, I don't know anything about what went on at Rockland, other than what I've read and what I've seen on the news and all the other stuff that goes on there. But, you know, it sounds like it is a very traumatic, that it was an incident.
I think I also think it's important to separate what happened in the classroom compared to the human being that brought the book in, compared to the class, the group of people that we're talking about. Compared, I mean, there's, we're touching upon so many, compared to the way parents were treated by the Rockland Academy School Board, or how they feel they were treated. I think there's so many different aspects that we do have to keep bringing it back to, do we want to adapt this policy or not?
I don't doubt about that. I'm not questioning that. I want to give them a tool.
It really does put them on the spot.
So that's kind of what I was getting at. This is something in that stage right there on BP 6144, something to not give them clarity that says that they have the ability to pull this off. Although from a management point of view, of course, they do have a tool, right? I need to check with which district's superintendent.